Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is May 28, 2024. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Hall has an excused absence this evening, and I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Mike Saporoni. Mike, thanks as always. We need to have the minutes from the last council meeting of May 14 approved. Could I call on you, Mrs. Fisher, for a motion?
Actually, I think Mr. Sullivan's going to do that.
Yeah, I'll take that one. Your Honor, I've read and reviewed the council meeting minutes in the workshop minutes from May 14, 2024. I find them in order, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, please call and roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Staying.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay, we do have one appointment to make tonight. This is to the Sustainability Committee, and it is for Reagan Cope, who I believe is being reappointed. This is for a term ending 12/31/24. I don't believe Reagan is here tonight. No, she is not. We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing none. Thanks, Reagan, for your commitment in the past and looking forward to a future term. There are no public hearings this evening. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to address council on the legislation on tonight's agenda, this is the time for you to do so. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have any comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address council at this point? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to ordinances in second reading. And there are none. We will now move to resolutions. I'll call on Mrs. Fisher to start introducing the legislation.
Your Honor, I do have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into one or more agreement with Montgomery County and Starwyn Industries LLC for an Edge Program funding award and an economic development incentive grant. The estimated cost is $150,000, which is coming from the county. The city's putting in $50,000. We have zero budgeted, and it is requested by the city manager's office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. Vice Mayor Fisher's introduction did a great job explaining what we're doing here. We're fortunate enough to see one of our businesses receive a Montgomery County Edge Grant in $150,000. It'll support their expansion at 3387 Woodman Drive. The local match for the grant is articulated is from the Kettering Incentive Program valued at $50,000. And later on in the agenda, we'll be asking you to approve an appropriation that supports this resolution. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, please call and roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation to allow the city of Kettering to serve as responsible lead agency for administration of the Dorothy Lane improvements, Hague Avenue to Woodman Drive, city project number 02-102L, ODOT project ID number 121634. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. The city of Kettering has received funding approval for the project that Mr. Sullivan described, so ably. And this one is improvements on Dorothy Lane between Hague and Woodman Drive. It's in the mutual desire of ODOT and the city of Kettering to have the city of Kettering serve as the responsible lead agency for the administration of the project, and we recommend approval of the resolution.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call and roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation to allow the city of Kettering to serve as responsible lead agency for administration of the Far Hills Avenue Street Lighting Improvements, city project number 07-100U, ODOT project MOT Far Hills Avenue 121633. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Grayson, do you have any comments?
Yes, Your Honor. This is similarly a project where we were successful and have received funding approval from the Ohio Department of Transportation, and it is in the interest of both ODOT and the city for the city of Kettering to serve as the project administrator. You previously authorized us to apply for these funds. This is a street lighting project on Far Hills Avenue roughly between Stroup and Dorothy that is several years, a couple of years out in the capital improvements program, but we need to do this legislation now to support administration of the project. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions? Please call and roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, to allow the city of Kettering to serve as responsible lead agency for administration of the Founders Drive Sidewalk Project to Research Boulevard to College Drive, city project number 02-254M, ODOT project MOT Founders Pedestrian IMP PID 121631. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Yeah, I wish Mr. Burgstrescher was here because we could compliment him and his team for successfully getting so many grants to support transportation improvements in Kettering. However, this is another grant that you authorized us to apply for that we are successful in obtaining and where it's both in the interest of ODOT and the city for the city to administer the program, in this case, a future sidewalk project on Founders Drive from Research to College Drive. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Call and roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I'm seeing a theme tonight. I also have a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation to allow the city of Kettering to serve as responsible lead agency for administration of the Wilmington Pike Resurfacing, Smithville Road to North Corporation City Limits, on city project number 02-1080A and ODOT project PID 121637. This, too, is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes, similar to the prior resolutions, this is for a project related to the Wilmington Pike Resurfacing and the city of Kettering serving as the local project administrator for ODOT. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, call and roll.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the Board of Education of the Kettering City School District for the Safety Section Program for the 2024-2025 school year. It is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. For many families, the first city employee they see in any day is the school crossing guard, and so we support the school crossing guard program and the Kettering Safe Routes to School program by cost-sharing or paying about roughly half the cost of providing the crossing guards each year. And so this resolution would authorize me to enter into the agreement with Kettering City Schools to continue that, and we recommend approval of it. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, call and roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution appointing Amy J. Haislip as municipal clerk of the city of Kettering, Ohio. This is requested by the city council office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson.
Well, since this is your appointment, I don't have any remarks other than to say I'm excited to work with Ms. Haislip, and I'm honored to have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, call and roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Sorry for the delay. Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
A very happy yes.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Exuberant yes.
Mayor Laner?
With pleasure. Yes. Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024. Estimated cost is $499,100, as requested by the Finance Department. I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. Several supplemental appropriations. One is $9,000 in the mayor and council's personnel budget in order to cover personnel costs through the remainder of 2024. Second is supplemental appropriation, and I referenced this earlier, $150,000 is related to the Montgomery County Edge Grant. So we're receiving those funds. You authorized me to do that. We also then need to appropriate those. And a third one is a supplemental appropriation of $287,400. That is related to the police department's personnel expenditures and the wage terms that were approved on May 16 in the contract with the Kettering Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 92. The original 2024 budget included 0% in the budget anticipating negotiations, and we now need to approve the agreed-upon contract amounts. The cost impact of that increase is roughly $241,800 in the Police Department Cost Center and $45,600 in the Police Pension Fund. Additionally, there is some operating expenses in the Police Department, a supplemental appropriation that is related to equipping two marked cruisers. Those vehicles were ordered in 2023, but we're doing the equipment in 2024.
Okay, any questions? Okay, call and roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Okay, well, now move to ordinances in first reading. And let's see, that would start with Lisa.
I have an ordinance to provide for the table of organization, position classification plan, compensation plan, and pay schedules and rules and regulations pertaining to conditions of work and supplemental benefits for the employees of the city of Kettering, Ohio, and to repeal ordinance number 4404-23. This is first reading.
Okay. Any comments?
Just a brief overview. This ordinance does several things. One is it provides a 2024 general pay increase retroactive to the beginning of the year of 3.5% for non-unionized regular full-time and regular part-time employees. Previously, you had approved a pay increase of 2.25. This brings it to the 3.5 that was granted to union employees that are part of the FOP Lodge, so brings non-union, regular, part-time, and full-time employees up to that amount. Additionally, it makes a change by deleting a position that's no longer active, Traffic Control 3, and it changes the way we treat the Office of the Clerk of Council pay. It decouples it from the pay grade reference, which was Section 412, and creates new language that states that the city council, when they appoint the clerk, will set the clerk's compensation by resolution, and then it provides procedures for the appointment of an acting clerk by the manager or the mayor if the clerk's absent or just absent due to, for any reason.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, first reading. Next one.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance in first reading to amend Chapter 947 of the Codified Ordances Regarding Street Lighting Assessment Procedures.
First. Do you have any comments?
Be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions? Okay, first reading.
Your Honor, I do have an ordinance to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering to show the installation of traffic signs on various city streets in the city of Kettering, Ohio. It is first reading.
Okay. Any comments? All right.
I have a very similar one. Your Honor, I have an ordinance to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering to show the installation of traffic signs on various city streets in the city of Kettering, Ohio. First reading.
Okay, no comments. All right. We'll now move to certifications and petitions. Mrs. Baker, do we have?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. Move to the manager's report, community update.
Yes, Your Honor. I want to make sure that everyone knows that it's Neighborhood Pride Award time. Please take a moment to nominate your neighbor, a business, yourself, or any Kettering resident you think is deserving of the neighborhood a pride award. The nominations will be accepted online or by emailing our volunteer administrator, it's administrator, Don Kirchner. The deadline for nominations is August 1, and we like always taking the opportunity to highlight people who are beautifying our community. I know you're excited. Tomorrow is the Kettering Community Block Party. Please join us for the block party at Lincoln Park and phrase Pavilion Wednesday, May 29, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is an opportunity for members of the community to learn more about our city departments and services. We'll have free entertainment on the phrase stage and an opportunity to meet your friends and neighbors and find out why we call Kettering home. Some other great Kettering events, the summer flea market and Touch a Truck, 8:30 to 11:30 on June 1. Always fun, the annual youth fishing derby, and there's a couple people here that might be able to speak to that in more detail, but annual youth fishing derby Saturday, June 8, 10 a.m., noon at Delco Park. That is supported by the Doorwood Optimists, our Kettering Police Department, and our Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. Always a lot of fun. On June 18, we'll be celebrating freedom in Kettering with the Juneteenth celebration. There's actually two of them. The first will be held at the Rosewood Arts Center from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the second will actually be on June 19 at Lincoln Park Civic Commons from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we encourage the public to come. You may have heard about our Kettering Heritage Tree Program, part of our Arbor efforts honoring exceptional trees in Kettering. We have now created a Heritage Tree Award. A heritage tree is a tree defined as a perennial plant having a single woody main trunk, usually characterized by the ability to grow to considerable size. That's a tree. Up to 10 trees each year. So we're going to recognize up to 10 of these perennial plants each year. After submission, Kettering staff will confirm the tree in details and get owner permission for nomination, and we're excited about highlighting some of the special trees in Kettering.
There'll be different kinds of trees, but there'll be significant trees in Kettering. Significant trees. Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
I thought I'd provide some comic relief there.
Yeah, very much so.
You guys gotta be there to experience.
That's right.
All right. Let's see, who are we going to start with? Mr. Sullivan?
I think we have an audience member.
Oh, we do. We have to read your thing.
We got to read that.
Read your thing, ma'am.
Hold on just a second. See, he happens to know you, so make sure you didn't get forgotten. This is the time in our meeting, if you wish to speak before a city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. If there is anyone who would like to speak before a city council tonight, stay there.
Aye.
Please come now.
Good.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Lou Yort. I live at 4001 Glen Heath Drive. Been there for 46 years.
Forty-six.
It's a long time.
My first concern is the city of Kettering having noise ordinance.
Do we? That was a question.
Is that a question?
Yes, it is.
I'm going to defer to the city manager.
Yes. How is it enforced?
Let's discuss that. You want to help?
I'm more happy.
So, and Mr. Amer may be able to weigh in as well. So, the noise ordinance is across property lines, if that's what you're referring to?
I'm talking about the street noise.
So, vehicles?
Vehicles.
Grayson.
Well, that's a difficult one to enforce.
I understand that.
And there is no specific ordinance except for loud noise that we deal with if we get calls about motorcycles that are loud. If it's a certain area where we have that, we will put officers in those areas to try to monitor that. I think we spoke before. Is that correct? So, we do, in the instance that you're talking about right now, we do have a supervisor who is assigned to traffic issues that we get. That has been passed on to her. She assigns those to certain officers who are then put in those areas during the times. They do do enforcement action, and then they give a report back that's sent back up to us to determine if we should continue doing that, if there's issues there, and if we do need to do more enforcement.
I think, you know, a few years ago, I happen to know this police officer, Erica, rest of that.
Yes.
And he was a motorcycle cop back then, and he always sat on Kenmar. Pulled over quite a few people in front of my house, and you just don't see that anymore.
So, we do have one motorcycle officer right now. We're staffed for two. We just have one right now that is working, but we do know about that area, and it has been passed along to them. And I'll be more than happy to get your information when we're done here, and I'll check on tomorrow and be more than happy to call you back.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I also live off Stroup Road, and I know exactly what you're talking about. Unfortunately, the difficulty of, you know, they're making noise because they're going so fast.
Oh, yeah.
And by the time, if the police officer isn't right there, it's pretty hard to catch them, so.
Anytime between 5:30 in the evening and 7:30 in the evening is a pretty good time to, you know, you can park in my driveway. But that's one thing I've got.
They might take you up on that.
Yeah, I got a comment about the traffic signals in Kettering. I don't know how everybody else drives. I've been driving for, you know, 60 years, and I always look at crosswalks. I drive for Advanced Auto on Stroup Road, so I'm on the road quite a bit with a truck. And I have noticed, excuse me, that the countdown signal does not work on some intersections, you know, when it starts.
Streets.
And letting drivers know when that light is going to change yellow. Now, there's a intersection of Marshall and Wilmington Pike.
City manager's writing that down because our engineering guy's not here, so he's writing it down.
I think the chief is, too.
But he's the one that's going to fix it.
And also Schroyer and Stroup.
Schroyer and Stroup.
Now, the one at Marshall and Wilmington, it was probably about, I don't know, six or eight weeks ago. I was delivering parts up the red line. And before I got to the intersection, I noticed there was a police officer in the old Mexican Pedro's whatever it is restaurant. And the light had changed yellow when I was going, and I had a back end full of rotors and brake pads. Well, I chose, it might have been pink, but it was pretty red when I ran. If I had come to a stop, you know, I would have made a mess. But on my way back, I stopped, I talked to the police officer, I told him the same thing I'm just telling you guys right now about that light, that it wasn't working right. Within the next couple of days, it was working. You could see the signals count down. It did just count down, and within a couple, three days after that, it just quit working.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. You said Marshall and Wilmington Pike, and you're concerned about Schroyer and Stroup as well.
Right.
Okay.
Is that my five minutes?
It's your five minutes?
Yes, your five minutes. I didn't set it.
Bonnie needs one of those five-minute timers, or his wife.
I told her you said that.
Yeah. So, you know, I'd like to just comment that we can't, even with wonderful staff, always catch all of these things.
Oh, I agree with that.
So, we do appreciate it when a citizen tells us about a problem, because that's the sort of thing engineering can look at.
I realize that.
See what we can do.
And I've got one more thing to bring up.
That's your five minutes.
Yeah, I know, but I want to go over.
You're too tough.
There's.
Since you're the only one who came to speak to us tonight, you can have one more minute.
I think I'm underdressed. They put up a traffic signal at the corner of Stroup and Glen Heath, on Glen Heath, no through traffic. They've got another one up at Wilmington and Glen Heath, no through traffic. How do you control that? The reason why I'm bringing it up is because it's a pain in the butt because it interferes with my grass cutting, and I got to weed around it. Weed eat around it. You can't. There's no way you can control that. So what's the purpose of it? I'm sorry.
Tried enough to get the trucks to go through there. That's another engineering question. That's another engineering question. That's another engineering question.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm done.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Okay. Now, Mr. Sullivan, I will let you give the first report.
No, she wants you to go first.
Okay, I'll go first. So, yesterday, we had a chance, there was a Memorial Day ceremony at Beavertown Cemetery. I assumed Ms. Fisher was going to talk about it, but it was pretty well attended. Mr. Grayson was there, Mayor Laner, Mr. Scott, and Ms. Fisher. And it was just a great ceremony, and it's just a great reminder of the people who have served our country and allowed us to live in this great country. And I wanted to talk, I assumed you would say that, so I wanted to talk about the history of Beavertown really quickly. of Beaver Town really quickly.
See, that's the...
I love the history of this area, the local history, and the cemetery, which is located in Kettering. It is the oldest cemetery in the Dayton area and contains remains from a Revolutionary War veteran, veterans from the War of 1812, a Mexican-American war veteran, veterans from the Spanish-American War, many Civil War veterans, and also vets from World War I, World War II, and the Korean War. So, I thought that was amazing, right here in town, and I think it was 1804. Do you remember the year, the first burial?
1803.
1803.
It was the beginning of the year.
Oldest, oh, there you go, oldest in the area. So, I thought that was pretty neat, and I wanted to share that. That's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you for the history lesson.
That's right.
I'll be real brief. Mr. Greason brought up about the Doorwood Optimist Fishing Derby on June 8, at Delco Park. That is a very well-attended event. I'm kind of partial, because I'm an optimist, but Doorwood puts on a great event for the youth of this area. I also want to speak to the memorial service yesterday. As a father-in-law of a former Army Ranger and an active Air Force officer, the way that ceremony is handled is extremely dignified and does hit home every year that I attended. And on a lighter note, I want to give kudos to the bowling team comprised of Mr. Sudeth, Ms. Fisher?
I was bad.
Myself, and the high scorer, Amy Shrimp. So, congratulations.
What was it, a 90?
No. She broke 100.
So, as far as the fishing derby goes, just a little side note, that the president of Doorwood, Jack Steele, was horrified when I told him I had never been to one. So, sorry, Doorwood. And this, I think this time around, it's the same day and possibly time as in Gintilly Park opening, and I got to go to Gintilly Park, so I'm sorry, Mr. Steele. So, you can yell at me again next year. First of all, I just want to welcome Amy Haslip. We are so thrilled to have you, looking forward to working with you again. Apologize in advance for all the ridiculous questions I ask. Sorry. If it's okay, I would like to speak a little bit for Mr. Greason and myself. It's been a chaotic few weeks, so I haven't attended a lot of city events, but last week, Mr. Greason and myself had reason to be at the Fairmont graduation, and I just want to say I'm proud of my own child who graduated last one. Yes. But that graduation ceremony is amazing. They do such a good job, they wrangle all those kids. But I think the most impressive part was, I think it was Mrs. Denzil, the Fairmont principal. She said that collectively, the class of 2024 earned, was it 2 million or 4 million? Do you remember, in scholarships in total?
A lot.
It's a huge amount. We have some really accomplished kids in this city, and I just wanted to thank the Kettering City Schools for everything they do. And I'm done. Isn't that great? So, and one more thing, get your Kettering Leadership Academy applications in. You have about three weeks left. We have a few spots open, so get those applications in. That's it.
Just a few things. One, just an event that I'll be a part of Saturday night, the Greater Dayton Honor Flight Organization has their second spring flight to DC and back on Saturday, June 1, and those of us who are interested in welcoming back the veterans on that flight, that'll be at Dayton International about 9:30 Saturday night, and the concourse is full, Air Force Band is there, and then you're just welcoming these veterans. Majority of this flight, there's a few Korean War vets, majority are Vietnam vets, and they're making their first trip to DC to see the memorials, and then they come back to a big celebration at Dayton International Saturday night, the 1st. If you see me there, please say hi. Also, just to echo the mayor's, or the city manager's report, mark your calendars for Juneteenth. It's a celebration that gets better and bigger every year, and that event is in two parts, Tuesday, the 18th, at Rosewood, and then the block-party-esque celebration with food trucks and vendors and entertainment will all be on Wednesday night, the 19th, the actual day of Juneteenth. It promises to be a great event for anybody in the community who's interested in promoting just good neighbors and the celebration of what Juneteenth represents. So, again, that's Wednesday, the 19th, at Lincoln Park, and I look forward to seeing you there.
Mr. Sudeth, can you please explain what's happening the first night?
Yeah, so the first night, there's actually a viewing of a documentary and a discussion around that, and then we're also going to try to display the youth essays, they won't be there, but the essays and the video that the youth from the MLK contest will be on display at Rosewood. So, it's a movie, it's documentary, correct, Amy? Did I make that right, documentary? And a discussion around that documentary, and then that's just sort of a kickoff to the block party event on Wednesday.
Okay, great. Thank you. Since I skipped you going first tonight?
It's all good.
It threw you all out.
I can, I can.
Took all your words.
I can handle it. It's okay. My top three things, I want to uplift our employee council here in the city. They put together a dog therapy session at the Phrase, and so, for folks that were stressed out, and I will say, I personally heard about and saw one person that came out there that had recently lost their pet, and so, it truly was therapy for several of our employees. And so, add a girl, add a boy to our employee council for that. Second, I got to represent the city and go out and thank all of our volunteer coaches on the soccer for this season, and what a thankless job, huh, Shane? Shane was one of them. He was the first guy I got to say thank you to, which was awesome. But every single one was just, oh, you're thanking me? And was very surprised, and it was their pleasure, and it, what a great, what a great day, and it was raining, so it was yucky weather and the whole nine yards, but all, I volunteered to take every season now to go out there and thank all of our volunteer coaches, because it is a tough job. My daughter did it this time, and she said, never again. Just was too much. Last but not least, I want to thank the city for allowing me the opportunity to go to the Dayton Development Coalition Fly-In. I went with our city manager and our economic development director, met with a lot of community leaders and folks that are movers and shakers in the community, reinforced a lot of what I kind of already knew from our base and what's going on in the larger world, and it was a great presence, and I will say, when Dayton flies in, they're a force, and it was great. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
Matt and Amy went with Jackie.
My next comment was going to be about Amy. Welcome to the city council, and we are looking forward to working with you, and thanks, Jennifer, for filling in, and we're going to let you go back to the city manager's office and do what you were hired to do. But it's going to be a great team, and I'm really looking forward to working with both of you. What I started to say to you, Mrs. Vice Mayor, was thank you very much for filling in on me at the fly-in with 24 hours' notice. Great, I was feeling under the weather, and so, Amy got to go to Washington instead. The only thing I want to comment on is the Community Block Party, which is this coming, well, tomorrow night, from 6:00 to 8:00, as city managers share. It's a wonderful opportunity just to get together with your neighbors and mingle with some of the city's staff and volunteers. It's just a fun community event, and I really encourage you to come out, get your dilly-bar from the council, and there's all sorts of other food trucks and activities going on, so, great way to kick off your summer. So, with that, that concludes our meeting this evening. Our next city council meeting will be on May 28, 2024, and this meeting is adjourned.